Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 15th meeting of the Oregon Board of Education. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. The moment of silence this evening is for Lucas Mason. I knew him as a sweet child with a big smile at Jerusalem Elementary School. He was generous and helpful and would do anything for anyone. Mr. Kennedy, you knew him as a coach. Would you like to add anything?
Your sound isn't on.
Sorry, had to unmute. Yeah, like you said, just to give her a really big, hard and infectious smile, just a wonderful young man. An absolute protector of all his friends, stood up for what was right, a wonderful student and tremendous athlete. So he'll forever be remembered in our hearts.
Thank you. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. And justice. For all.
May we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Ruth?
Certainly. Mr. Shea. Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mrs. Miller. Mrs. Mulner.
Here.
And Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written with the removal of C, D, and E under the Treasurers' Report. We will take care of those at the June 30th special meeting. Now, I have a motion, please.
No move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item five, Staff and Community Recognition. We would like to recognize Rose Show for 20 years of dedicated service to the students and community of Oregon City Schools. And we want to recognize the students who entered the Vans Shoe Design Contest. And Mr. Hal, would you like to take that?
Sure, we just want to recognize them. We're going to talk more when we get back into recognizing people in person. But Mrs. Walsh, our art teacher, and two of her students entered a contest by which they designed a shoe for the Van the Van Shoe Company. And it was a nationwide contest. And they submitted designs for a shoe and took second place out of all those submitted across the country and will be receiving $10,000 from winning that second place. So that's all that I know about it at this point. I don't know if the shoes actually go in production or what happens with that, but we will certainly find out more. So very proud of them.
Thank you. Public participation. If anyone has a comment or statement, please email hellgregory@hellgregoryorganics.org. It will be read provided the topic is permissible under board policy and can be completed within three minutes. No more than 30 minutes per public participation will be allotted. Please provide your name and address when sending an email. And we can also do that at the June 30th meeting if someone would like to submit something. At this time, the board welcomes comments on how the Oregon City Schools utilize their Title VI funds for the 2021 school year. Hearing no comments, we'll go to the Treasurers' Report, Mrs. Ruth.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Mulner. Obviously, with everything we've been working on with reductions, I did not have a chance to get item C, D, and E done, which is why they were pulled. I did want to point out item F, though, which is the motion to waive the convenience fee for parents using pay schools for 2021, beginning July 1st, 2020. We are changing from, well, Easy Pay got bought out by pay schools. So Easy Pay is no longer being updated. Pay Schools is, you know, the new, new and improved. So I am asking that we switch to pay schools. The costing is actually, there's going to be an option for not just a credit card, but you can actually ACH it too, which is less expensive for parents. So they may prefer that. But I was hoping we could, again, especially in the times we're in, pay for that convenience fee. More and more parents are turning to it to pay for their fees. And my dream is, of course, that everyone will pay their fees that way. But we aren't quite there, but we're getting pretty close.
Jane, on that, is that something, once we approve this, Dawn has to go update all the various systems from Easy Pay to this methodology?
No, no, it's done. It's a web-based system. And they just have to, there's a real quick update. But I've already sent it. I haven't heard back from the tech department. I sent it. I've sent it twice and I haven't heard, but I.
When I log into and pay fees online, it's one of the options over there that then drives me to pay. So that's.
Yes, it'll be that. And we're going to get it on the front page of the website. It's hidden and people have no idea where to go. I mean, I know it's under families, but I've had more questions. So we're going to need to make it a little more clear this year.
Same for the school lunches?
And that's the advantage, too. It'll also show your school lunch balance when you go in. So everything will be right there in front of you. It's actually a direct coordinate with our lunch program that Vicki. So it's a pretty, it's pretty slick. And it will cost, I think it'll actually cost us a little less when push comes to shove because of the ability to ACH. All the, I know this minor point, but all the project cash requests, the deadline was last Friday. We got all those in. So that's all our grant money. So we got that taken care of. I was going to wait till the, our finance committee met. We're going to do discussion later in the board discussion. So I sent some items. Hopefully you got the printouts that I sent that we worked through with the finance committee. I sent them through in the Google Docs. If not, I can always pull them up on the screen while we're talking about it. Otherwise, we're tracking as expected. Our total revenue is down 0.4% from last year. And as of now, expenditures are up right around 2%. So, yeah, we're tracking where we're at, but we've got one more payroll. And last, I might hope my last check run would be last Friday, but some last things have come in. So we're going to have just a couple more items before we can truly close. So unless there are questions, that's my report. I was going to keep it short tonight so we can discuss the other matters that are open to our board discussion.
And may I have a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report, please?
No move. Second.
Discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. Okay, and Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on those consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Just a second. She didn't, okay, I'm sorry. So it was Keith. Who is the second? I apologize. I missed it. Heather?
Heather, I think you're on mute. No, can't hear you.
All right, Keith.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Okay, moving to new business. Item A, administrative salary freeze. We need a motion to approve a freeze of administrative salaries for the 2021 school year at the 1920 current rates. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. The, under new business fee schedules, we need a motion to approve the following Clay High School fees. Band fee for smart music, end-of-the-year uniform cleaning and uniform replacement. That fee would be $90. A waiver is not available for pay-to-participate fees as listed above. Now, I have a motion, please. A second.
Thank you, Keith.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller. Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item C, State Software Development Team Lease. We need a motion to approve the lease with State Software Development Team, SSDT, for one year commencing on July 1st, 2020 and ending on June 30th, 2021 in the amount of $11,016. Three rooms at $3,672 each, payable in monthly installment of $918. Now, I have a motion.
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item D, Disposal of Materials. The items approved for disposal at the May 19th board meeting have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Item E, Donations. We need a motion to approve the following donations. Larry and Leon Lee Anne's headroom for a donation of $325 to Eisenhower Intermediate School, sixth grade class in memory of their daughter Shelby. And the Oregon Community Theater donated $500 in the memory of Tricia Hamilton to be used to support the programs of Elizabeth Gibson at Facet Junior High School. May I give a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Zavisky.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Thank you to the Kessling family and Oregon Community Theater. Item F is a motion to purchase four 72-passenger buses for the price of $86,065 each for a total of $344,260 as bid by Meta. Three will be purchased from the PI Fund effective immediately and one to be purchased from the General Fund if funds are available at a later date. Now, I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Discussion.
Real quick, Kelly, Jane, what I was talking about from the General Fund. I know that was part of our savings plan to be from the capital. Is that, what does this wording do with what we have kind of implemented as far as purchasing them from the Capital Fund and not the General Fund?
The capital account, the General Fund. What we're going to do is, if, you know, next year's budget, as far as what we're getting from the state, is a true, it's a true guess at this point. And if, for some reason, it's not as bad as we have budgeted, then that would give us the option, we would have, we would retain the pricing and we could still purchase it from the General Fund. We have a, we were given a grant and, excuse me, I think it's $34,000, but I, it was $30,000 at least to help offset the purchase of the bus, which would mean it would only be around $50,000 from the General Fund. So we're just, we're just leaving our options open. We're not going to get it right away. We're going to see how the year progresses. And they will hold the pricing for us if we handle it like this. But we're not necessarily going to get it.
This is still under the 1920 school year?
No, it's under the 2021. It's next year's school year. Yeah.
Okay, that's because we have $300,000 in our list of reductions. I want to make sure when we talk reductions later on, we're apples and apples with what we just did and what our plan was.
Yeah, I, this year we had 500,000 in the, excuse me, 550,000 in our capital funds and the General Fund. Next year, we have 250,000. So if we have the funds to purchase this bus, we will do so. But if there are other needs in the district, we will not. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner.
Yes. Item G are policies. The policies are IKFC, which are graduation plans and student debt risks, and IKF graduation requirements. This is just the first reading for those. We'll look at them for the next meeting to pass them. Any questions on those? Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulner. I just, I want to, I guess, just lead with, just saying a couple of words and thank, thank our community and for coming out and supporting the Mason family on behalf of Lucas. Obviously, these types of things are everyone's worst nightmare. But I do really want to thank everyone that there was a, you know, a nice crowd that came out to the ball fields. I believe that was Friday night and then certainly what happened over the weekend with the Hope Walk and all those types of things. You know, I can't imagine such a tragedy. And we've had our fair share in Oregon City Schools and every time people come together. And Keith, Mr. Kennedy, I just want to thank you. And I know, you know, you're very close to the family and to that group of kids. And, you know, your support has just been unbelievable. And keep doing it. And, you know, our schools will do, I guess, anything we possibly can to support the family and moving forward because this isn't a one day, one week, one month type of thing. And it's something that we just have to continue to come together. So anyways, you know, we're very sad about what happened. And, you know, we'll all move on to do our best to support them in the future. Next fall is the big topic, continues to be the big topic. You know, what's going to happen in the fall with school districts? There still has not been any final guidance put out by the state of Ohio. I'm here in July 1st now. Don't know if that's the case or not. So I am personally working under the assumption that we will resume classes in the fall as we have in the past. That means, you know, in my mind, that means five days a week with all kids being in school. We have gone through and measured and scoped out every classroom in the district. And we know what essentially, what maximum capacity for desks and tables and those types of things would be in each and every classroom. I'm walking through Eisenhower tomorrow just to get a better sense of that building. But again, you know, assuming that we're allowed to open up five days a week, that has certainly been the overwhelming, overwhelming survey results across the board in our area anyways. I know there's other counties and other districts that have already put stuff out to their public about their intent to open up. So, but until the state tells us differently, I'm going to assume, and I know that's a scary word, but I'm going to assume that we're going to have the opportunity to open up. Mr. Sandwich has been working hard with his team on putting the PPE plan together, getting masks and thermometers and plexiglass gloves, shields, cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer, all those things. Working through calculations based on what they believe we're going to need quarter by quarter next year. So we're going to do our best to get all that ordered. I think we have a handle on where to order most of that. Is that fair to say there, Mr. Sandwich?
Absolutely, yes. Yep. Hopefully by the end of the week, it'll all be ordered.
Awesome. So again, you know, the plexiglass to kind of protect our, you know, sneeze guards or barriers between people is available locally. So we're fortunate that way. There's still a lot of questions that are out there, transportation being the biggest one in terms of how many kids can be on a seat. You know, there's some districts that are saying they're doing two to three on a seat unless they are banned from doing so, which is a typical bus. You know, with masks and some other precautions. So we know we need at least two per seat to make this happen. So we're going to move under that assumption that that's possible and plan on that. The other big wild cards are the cafeteria and then whether or not we're going to have a sports season. I think those are kind of the biggest ones that are still kind of hanging out there. But whatever happens, I do have a lot of confidence that, that even if we have to be nimble and adjust on the fly, you know, as we get deeper into the summer, we'll be able to do that. So I don't know if there's any questions specifically from the board about reopening. I'll certainly try to answer them. But again, we're still kind of in a wait-and-see mode, hoping that we get some definitive guidance. Any questions about that? I appreciate your patience and I appreciate the community's patience. Districts are, you know, communicating in different ways. But, but most of us are kind of in this waiting pattern. And as soon as we know, we'll get, we'll get things organized and get information out there. And just lastly, I want to say, you know, if you've been around the district at all, you've started to see kids, sports teams, they've been out the last couple of weeks doing their thing, using our facilities at Clay High School for weightlifting and conditioning and drills, those types of things. Been very proud of our staff, our coaching staff, our leadership, following their directives and then having kids, you know, with temperature checks and keeping their distance and doing those types of things. So I feel like it's going really well. We started phase one of our facility use at Clay. Now we're going to be expanding to the junior high. So you're going to start to see more activity happen over at Facet. Playground equipment is open on our district, as long as the ball, as well as the ball diamonds, which have been open for a while. You know, for those of you that have been out to the rec, I mean, things kind of look like they're normal. So, you know, obviously, if we hear of large, huge group gatherings, we'll do what we can. But all in all, it's been real well. And from what I understand, the band is also going to start beginning, doing some activities, tryouts and practices here in the near future. So you'll maybe start to hear some sounds and maybe feel like things are getting back to normal in the summer a little bit. So that's my report unless there's any questions on specifics.
Hal, do you have an update on the Chromebook purchases? Dawn updated or anything? A trade timeline, trade back value, anything?
Let me bring up a quick email.
Really, the main point just is, you know, is everything tracking the way we think it's going to be with the trade-in value?
I don't have specifics on the trade-in value. I got an email from Mrs. Shavoni on Friday, okay, that the first six pallets of the high school max are shrink wrapped and, and been freighted out. So we won't have any, you know, dollar amount numbers till they do those evaluations on those. But the good thing is, is we only have about 24 or less now of high school max that we need to get from parents. So that number was significantly higher just a couple of weeks ago. So I don't have the specific dollar amounts, but we will definitely, well, hopefully have it by the June 30th, a special board meeting.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mrs. Mulner.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. And moving on to old business, which I will turn over to Mrs. Ruth, Mr. Zavisky and Mr. Shea for levy and finance discussion.
Do you want me to just discuss the forms I sent out and then you guys can take it from there?
Yeah, go ahead, Jane.
Okay, did you get, did everybody get them and print them out or do I need to put them up on the screen? The first one I'm going to discuss is just an update to what we talked about at the last board meeting. And what it showed was, if we went on the November ballot and there is a whole list of different types of millages, last month I focused it on not starting cuts until two years out, fiscal year 2122. What I prepared for this meeting is those numbers are still on the bottom. But on top, you'll see the November 2020 ballot millage. Then what kind of cuts would need to be made this upcoming school year, fiscal year 2021? And what the unencumbered balances would be. I've got the November 2020 ballot. I've got the spring 2021 with the same information. So I'm, I'm just going to, for instance, if you go down, if we put the exact same amount we had on the ballot the last time, I'm just, you know, the 4.95 mils. We would need to cut $575,000 starting this upcoming school year. An additional, this is on top of what we've already cut. We've already cut around 1.3 million. And that's already in the five-year forecast. These cuts are not yet in the forecast. And then we would end the, the end of school year with an approximate unencumbered cash balance, or excuse me, we'd end fiscal year 2324, which is the end of the five-year forecast with a $473,000 cash balance. So that's the basics. The top part is cuts starting July 1st school year. The bottom part is the cuts starting the second year out, 2122. The other thing I sent to you then is a little green, with just green on it, is reductions for discussion. And we discussed some of these that are, well, all of them at our finance committee meeting. And we wanted to share them with you, what we're discussing.
Jane, are those in the drive because I couldn't find them?
Yeah, they were there. It's under COVID. It's called COVID impact adjusted or something.
I'm in a board education shared file and under what date did you put it today?
Yeah, it's today's date.
You got.
I went in and saw it. So I don't know if you're not getting it, but I can email it to you if you'd rather, but it's there.
If you could quickly because I, it's not in my drive. It's not in the shared drive.
Everybody else's?
Pardon?
Was everybody else find it?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll send it to you, Mike. One moment. Let me.
Jane, I'll email it. Jane, go ahead.
Thank you.
Jane, before you continue, the list that you're talking about that we discussed, the 2021, is those reductions in the levy amount?
No, 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 no. These are kind of just to be like, these are to be used in coordination with each other, so to speak. So if.
But so, because we've got the million.
The million three is in the forecast, are you?
Okay, but there's other, other one that we went over in finance is not in.
No.
Okay.
No, because I would have to go into the state and actually resubmit a new forecast. And these are still very tentative in terms of, we're just now talking about it. We don't have board approval on them. So this is where.
Well, none of them take board approval. It's just like the last list. None of them, we just did them. They didn't like take board approval. So I just, I want to make, I want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, they're not in the forecast yet. These are ones to consider. So the first item is we shift some funding around. We had quite a bit of 6B money left this year. That's our Title VI federal special ed grant. And we would pay for three of our required aids out of Title VI. D will help me establish which ones that we are not going to be asking for catastrophic or excess costs on because if we pay for the amount of federal funds, we cannot ask for those kinds of reimbursements. But we have some that we do not do that for. So that will be coming out of 6B funds instead of the General Fund. We're going to be looking at paying Blackman. What we pay the Genacross for the Blackman aids and the rental, we're going to put that into 6B as well. Again, those are items we do not get excess costs on. We haven't had them in recently because D was kind of on a program to update playgrounds with equipment especially made for children with special needs. So we're kind of setting. So we're kind of setting that aside for now and, um, trying to save ourselves. We had talked about reducing two paras or we currently have planned that are above what we call the required level. There's an asterisk next to that. The reason asterisk's there is I'll explain later, but that's asteriskized cuz we are not going to make that reduction. We're, we're gonna be using the care money to save that position for this coming school year. Bus mechanic, um, we have retirements coming. Um, we're going to try, we're going to not replace one of them mid-year. We've got the other one almost, I think they're almost ready to be hired. I don't wanna be out of turn, but you guys have certainly interviewed and, um, did we just hire them? Oh, I'm sorry, we just hired one. So we're not going to replace the, we have two bus mechanics retiring. We're going to hold off until the summertime to replace the second one. Um, half a career tech program and one career tech program, those are not labeled, but we are going to be saving those this year as well. With CARES Act money, um, so, um, which I'll discuss a little more later. Kindergarten teacher, we're not replacing one. We had some retirements and we are not going to be placing one because our enrollment does not justify us hiring another kindergarten teacher. Our kindergarten enrollment, um, has a great deal of cushion in it and we don't think we'll begin to get as many kids as we would need. So, um, you can see what I've done then from year to year as I move forward. I obviously I increase based on raises, insurance increases, et cetera. I increase the mounts based on those positions. Um, and the sixth grade teachers looking for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This year, our enrollment made it so that we, um, were able to, um, I guess reduce by two fourth grade teachers. Next year. I'm sorry, fifth grade. I said the wrong grade. I'm sorry. Next year, because of enrollment, we will be, um, moving some teachers around. We won't need two of them in sixth grade. Hopefully this will all be done through attrition. It's an enrollment adjustment that we already are pretty well aware of.
Help me understand this, Jane, though, because I, you know, I was looking at that. You're, you're showing. So what, we move these teachers around the district, so for us to show a hundred and fifty-three thousand, a hundred and fifty-seven, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars savings.
No, there, there's gonna be two less positions. So I said attrition because I'm assuming that, um. We'll have some retirements and so we'll move people around so that we don't have to hire any and no one maybe loses their job. But they'll be moved around and there'll be two less positions, just like.
So, so it will be, so it will be a lesser position. Okay, that was my question.
True, less, but I wanted to put attrition on there just so we don't have everybody. I mean, I, assuming we have, we tend that we tend to always have retirements. Um, now the CARES Act, I want you, um, to be clear on this. Um, when Hal went into the CARES Act to actually start doing the, um, budget for it. Um, it's like practically beating him over the head. How many staff members are you paying with this money to maintain jobs? Okay? It was very important for us to keep enough money out so that we can pay for all the supplies, the PP, the. I'm gonna not say what that is. I don't know, the protective equipment, the things that, that Dean is and his, um, team are working on ordering. His initial estimate was that he'd need around a hundred thousand for that. He thought that was generous. What we did, we, we discussed this in finance committee, that our tentative budget for this CARES Act will be to save. The two paras, the half a tech program and one career tech program for the next upcoming school year. We'll use that CARES money to save those programs and people. And then the rest, which is a hundred thirty-eight thousand roughly, will be used for supplies. Um, so we are in fact saving for next year, you know, five hundred fifty-six thousand. It's just that some of it's.
Jane, that five fifty-six, that does not include the position for the CARES Act. I ended up, should it?
Oh, I'm sorry. When I put the asterisk in, it must have taken it out. The whole point was we're saving those. Yeah, let me change that. Sorry about that. It, it messed it up when I put the asterisk in. Thank you. But so it will be all those together. Um, let me, I'll add it up quick. Sorry about that. That's my fault. But bottom line is.
Well, but for next year, what, what we're saying is that, um, the actual reduction cost. If we were to go for a four point nine five or five levy and we had to, um, make an additional. Let's say, based on her, her, uh, chart there, Jane's chart, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. This is where we're going to be recommending that comes from.
Yeah, but let me, we're actually with this, we're actually saving more. Uh, when I added that asterisk, it took them out of the, this actually comes to eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred dollars. That we're actually saving in the general fund. I apologize, asterisk messed up the formula and I, I didn't notice it.
I guess to be clear, this is stuff we're gonna do. I mean, do, it doesn't take board approval. We're, we're implementing that. So all the boards on the same page, these are things you guys brought to us. We're gonna implement these. Unless someone speaks up, is, is against one of them? Is that fair?
Yes, and this is, there are no jobs lost in this except a substitute bus mechanic for half a year. You know what I mean? It's no jobs are lost in these, you know, of our current employees. We're simply paying them out of different funds and thanks to the CARES Act, that's picking up two hundred fifty-four thousand of it. Um, but yeah, no jobs are lost or programs are lost with these.
Do we need a board motion because we're using the CARES money for that in any way? Is there anything in that grant? No? Okay.
I don't believe so. Hal, you've been looking at the, it's, it's just.
Yeah, no, we just have to complete the, uh, uh, it's, it's basically the federal grants. There's a process called the CCIP. Uh, they're doing the same process. It's, it's fairly intense. I mean, it's, it's not, it'll be a back and forth with the state of Ohio and, you know, we have to justify each and every move and penny of the CARES Act money. But clearly, under the usage of the CARES Act, uh, I think most districts are doing exactly what we are doing. Which one is supplies for the PPEs that we know we're gonna need and to save some jobs. And again, it's one-time money. Don't know if there's anything in the future coming that could, could help as well. But if you look at that entire, you know, budget of one point three that we did last time and eight hundred. You're looking at a pretty sizable amount of reductions for this year. Pretty significant.
Plus now this is eight hundred and ten thousand on top of that.
Right.
It also buys us, I don't wanna be all gloom and doom and I, I know, I don't wanna surprise people. But reality is until we know for sure, we hate to go cutting when we don't know for sure what's truly gonna happen with our state funding. Um, I think we, these are, this is a way to buy us a little time till we know what the true impact has been of this COVID on the state budget. But it still reduces our budget to protect our district.
Jane, can you update the five-year forecast with these and send it out to us, um, later this week? So we kind of see where we stand now with these and see what everything looks like. I mean, we'll, we'll need that when we talk about a levy and stuff.
I can do that. I can, I can do instead if you wouldn't mind, rather, I mean, we can redo the five-year forecast and approve it at the June thirty meeting. We can do that, or I could send you my little snapshot that does the same thing and shows you the balance.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Cuz really, it should come out pretty closely to, um, in between the four point four and a four point five mil. You know, I mean, cuz there you've got a million out and there you've got seven hundred fifty, so it'll come out right in between there. Um, well, actually a little bit better yet. So anyways, it'll come between there as far as what our bounds will be. So, yeah, I'll do that. I can do that.
Jane, with the, with the five-year forecast that you had updated last month, that had already the one point three million dollars in cuts that you guys had done. Instituted into it, correct? So you're looking at another eight hundred and thousand dollars here.
Exactly.
Um, let's, you know, discuss that the CARES money leftovers, three hundred thousand after remittancing is saving some of the positions and. Correct?
The CARES money that is apt, okay.
Leftover after saving the career tech and the paras.
Is, is the hundred thirty-eight, six eighty-five, and that is how much we've left for supplies to be used. There was like fifty-seven thousand of it out of our four hundred forty thousand that I originally stated. That has to go to the, um, Kateri, I, the, uh, parochial school. Yeah, the non-publics. I apologize. I shouldn't say.
So I, I know how you had said that we, you know, this is a significant amount of cuts. But if we look at the five-year forecast in twenty-one, that still leap puts us at five point nine million dollars in the whole expenses over revenue. In twenty-one. Yeah, well, that, that was always, yeah, that's always gonna be the case. I mean, we, we need support from our community. This, this is, this is all with the understanding that if we could, uh, place a ballot on a four point nine five levy. Or, or some number and to have a positive cash balance at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, we cannot do this without the community, period. No, I, 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 I agree with that sentiment. Um, you know, if we put a four point nine, what is the collectible in twenty-one on that, Jane?
Four point nine five? Oh, shoot, I had that for you the last meeting, just a second. I mean, per, per, um, taxpayer?
No, I, I remember what the, no, I, I remember what the cost is. I'm saying, what do we collect as a district in twenty-one?
Twenty-three per hundred?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Let me pull it up. I pulled it. I didn't have that up right now.
I guess my, my, my statement, Hal, is I don't even know if that, the four point nine five in twenty-one will get us to the. You know, five point eight million dollar hole that we're in going into twenty-one then. Uh, even if we, you know, we pass this four point nine five in the fall, whatever our collectibles is, it's not gonna be five and a, five and a half million dollars. To bring us back to net zero to where we're not eating away at our cash balances.
Um, we're going to be.
Yeah, that's probably true, yes.
Four point nine five mils brings in two point eight million dollars roughly.
So we're still about three million in the hole in twenty-one.
But if we have these cuts, just a second, I'll see what it does. I'll just, then I'll send this out to you guys.
Well, those cuts are only eight hundred thousand, Jane, so if we have a six point seven with eight hundred thousand, we're looking at five point nine.
But they're current, but they're, but the way we are looking at this as far as, well, my understanding was that these move forward, these are permanent then.
So they can be residual?
Yes.
I just wanted to, 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 to make that point that, you know, we, I think we're doing great things here and I'll, I'll applaud you, Jane and Hal. Um, and the finance committee for working together and, and getting some things done, but I, I still think we have, we have some work to do.
Well, let me say, okay, I'm not disagreeing, but if we put in the reductions or the revenue opportunities of eight hundred and ten thousand. Which is what we just added up, the levy proceeds, if we were to put it on, and I'll send this to everybody. We were to put it on in twenty, we begin collecting half in twenty-one. At the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, our, um, any cash balance would be one point four million dollars. Um, it's, it's not great, but you're right, we're still, you know, you're still spending, no question. We have, we have more work to do.
Would be negative one point four? We would be revenue over expenses?
It's, uh, no, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna be spending more than we're taking in, but our cash balances will still be one point four million.
Okay, so we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have eaten away at our, at our cash balances as quickly.
No, we had, these are the things that, I don't know, when we talked at finance, we kept us very, um. Um, what we're showing, there were other items on the list. We're showing you what we can, feel we can do. Right away, without turning the district apart. There are more things for us to discuss, but for tonight, we thought we'd.
Okay.
Jane, um, hear me out and see if I'm saying this right. So out of our two million from the one point three last time, this eight hundred and ten. If we take the Title VI, kind of the shift of funding, not a reduction, but a shift. And the three hundred of the capital expenditure reduction, um, shifting from capital from general. That's about seven, eight hundred thousand of a shift from those, from the general fund to these other ones. A one-time shift, that would be, you wanna get the residual years on that?
Well, yeah, you would because we're planning on doing it every year after that.
So we'll, we'll have enough six B money to pay for those?
Well, we just won't be buying capital items. If our budget is, as if the state. If we ha- if our budget is, is as poor a find as, um, we, we, it could be. Yes, we will continue to plan. There will be no money in six B to buy the extra capital stuff that we have tended to put money in. We've always, we've done that for several years. All we, we'll save that for, if there's some capital items, you know, that we can put in there, so.
No, and just so you understand, guys, with six B, which is, is used in part, well, in all, for students with special needs. And costs associated with it, you know, there's, there's been times where, you know, something comes up that you weren't expecting. Or a student moves in and there's been a high dollar expense need. So since I've been here, which has been seventeen years and I used to run that budget, we always allowed for a cushion. Because you just, I guess you just never knew if something crazy was going to come to your school that required a lot of money. Now, under, understanding that these cash balances are there, do we know what the federal grants will look like moving forward? I guess we don't know that moving forward. They could be reduced. There's a long history of consistency, though. Um, in six B that would allow this to be, you know, continued for some time. Um, again, we look at this each and every year, twice a year, pretty heavily and, and we would have to adjust as we move forward. But I think for our purposes tonight, our goal, at least today on June fifteenth, is to continue those, you know, reductions or those moves. Um, it, it, out throughout this five-year forecast.
So it's not a one-time shift. It's a, as of right now, a permanent shift.
Yeah, we've, we've had carryovers well over three hundred thousand the last two years, well over, and this year it's even more, so.
All right.
So I think, Jane, what the board needs next is, like I said, those scenarios and stuff, so we can just kind of. See this impact with the five-year, the lobby amount and stuff like that, uh. Um, with you guys still looking at different positions and different, you know, seeing what else pops up that we might be able to reduce a, a save on. In the meantime.
Yeah, cuz we have to have time to work with our, our, um, unions. And I have gone ahead, um, as I, I believe I said the finance. I, I have gone ahead to get the language in case we are ready to move forward in July. So just so you know, it doesn't do anything me going to get the language, but at least we have the proper virgins if we wanna move forward.
Okay, Jane, if I have those dates right, it's July twenty. First is our next regular board meeting, the July twenty-fourth is the deadline that you need to have that submitted.
Yeah, the first one has to be by July twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that's accurate. Is there anything else I can say? I'll send that one item out. Is there anything else I can send out to anybody to help with this?
Can you combine the two, so there's a comprehensive list, the, the one from last month, this month, and combine them into one sheet? So it's a comprehensive list of reductions?
Certainly, that's an honest, no problem. Yeah, so we're showing these are what the reductions have been for twenty-twenty-one. Yeah.
Yeah, and form in that same category of administrative certified, classified and stuff like that.
Yep.
Okay.
No problem. Okay, and I also add another column of just, um, how do I say it? Um, payment out of different fund.
Yes.
Cuz that's, um. That'll help too. Okay.
All right. Further questions or discussion?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to board committee reports, finance. You've done a great job. You have anything to add?
No, just everything from the beginning, everything from that discussion is what we discussed at finance.
Perfect, thank you. Capital improvement, health and safety.
We did not meet.
Policy personnel, um, the policies on evaluation of employees are still being, um, worked on. Have you worked out with the union? Academic? Legislative?
Well, we can see everything's kind of on hold right now. The legislators are trying to make decisions. And as you read those updates that we get from OSBA, it's kind of interesting to read them. So Jane and Hal have some work cut out for them, just interpreting what it says.
As soon as anybody decides what they're going to do. Yeah. Student achievement liaison? No? More discussion, anything for the good of the board? Okay, um, we will have an executive, um, session for the appointment, employment dismissal. Discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official. or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official licensee or student, unless the employee official licensee or student requests a public hearing. No decisions will be made, no votes taken and we'll conclude the meeting at the end of that session. Special meeting is on June 30th and then the next regular meeting is July 21st. Anything further for the good of the group? We'll go into executive session. Mr. Gregory, anything?
Yes, uh, did we pick a time for June 30th?
Oh, thank you. Were we talking about five instead of six or is there a time during the day? What, what works for you guys? Is that like a Tuesday? I, I should look. Wait. Oh, it's a Tuesday.
I had it down for 5:00 PM. I don't know if that was what we agreed on.
I kind of thought we did, but I want to make sure everyone still thinks, Hal, if everyone's still on the same page.
Yes.
Yeah, I hear five o'clock.
That's good. That's good.
Okay. And then the regular.
June 30th.
Correct.
Perfect. And then six o'clock, the regular meeting on 7:21. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else for the good of the meeting? Okay, let's go into executive session.
We have a motion and then we'll go into that.
To go into executive session.
So moved.
Back in.
Alright. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Mr. Savisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.